I will bring up the script for Susan to read. Can you see that, Susan?
I can. The time is now nine thirteen P M. And I'm calling to order the Saint Patothe area Architectural Conservation District Commission, June eighteenth, twenty twenty five public hearing. The commissioners present are Jim Kutchin, Nancy Russell, and Susan Trowbridge. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March twenty eighth, twenty twenty five amendment extending the suspension of these provisions until June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. We're conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Saint Patothe area Architectural Conservation District Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. Are there any media or elected officials currently present? No? Okay. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, you should just please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform, and we'll repeat these instructions throughout the hearing.
Yay.
So great. Okay, the first thing we need to do is to ratify some minutes from back last December. And I think you all got them. So I guess Jim and Nancy, did you get a chance to read them?
I did.
I did. I have to assume that they're accurate.
Yeah, right. I was just asking Joe about that, but apparently you can you can vote, even though you weren't at the meeting to approve them. So Jim, if you're okay with them.
I'm good.
You weren't there either, were you?
I was not a player.
I was the only one who was there of us. But as far as I can tell, they're accurate. So can I have a motion to approve them?
Approve.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's three zero. Next item is the big one. That's the design review of number nine Follin Street. And I guess we'll ask for presentation first.
Yes, I will. Let me see. I just want to orient you. I sent you my staff comments, so hopefully you had a chance to take a look at those. And I'll just read that nine Follin Street.
There's somebody in your waiting room, guys. I just noticed came up.
Yep, I just yeah, I just let them in.
Okay, great.
So the proposed work at front facade reopen three bricked in garden level windows and install windows and window wells. And at rear elevation, replace seven windows, replace section of stockade fence with brick wall and install gate and lighting. And what I will do is read you my recommendation. Staff recommends approval with provisos finding that there is clear evidence that there were windows at the front facade garden level of the building. The proposed window wells should be masonry flush to the grade of the front garden and follow the curve of the building's bow front. The window sash should be a hopper window or fixed window, which is historically appropriate for this style of building. All final details should be remanded to staff for final approval. The proposed work at the rear elevation of the building is minimally visible from the southwest corridor and should be approved as submitted. So I just want to orient us. I took a site visit the other day. So this is nine Follin Street right here. And if you're familiar with the street, they're somewhat identical buildings and they all have evidence that you can see here that there were lower level windows that have been bricked in. What's important about this project is this will be the first one on this block to re restore these windows and reopen them and potentially install window wells. I know the window wells that are being proposed were a metal variety, and I could not find any documentation, although they exist in the district that the commission has approved them in the past. So we're going to be looking at these three windows at the front. Now, this is the rear year of nine Follin Street, but our purview is limited to what you can actually see from the southwest corridor. So of course, this time of year, it's kind of tough with the all of the trees leafed out. But you do get a slight view, you know, it would be in this area here.
That's my dog. Let me let me lock him up just a second.
Oh, sure. Okay. So I think, you know, at the rear elevation, you'll be able to see some of the proposed brick wall, possibly the the proposed gate and exterior lighting. Regarding the windows, I don't think I think you'll only see the upper windows. So I think what's being proposed at the lower windows would actually be exempt from review because it's such a distance that you can can't see them or they're blocked by the existing stockade fence. So with that, Derek, I will let you share your screen.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Derek Blue with Blue Architecture. And we'll share my screen and talk through the plans that we submitted. With me tonight, Rob and Amy Cadner, the owners of the property we're discussing and in the background saying from from our office. So Joe is kind enough to orient you. This is the property here. So the southwest corridor runs here and that fence with the foliage is sort of here. So that's kind of the angle that you might view it from when there are no leaves and of course, you know, from the front was where we'd see the front, the front work. Taking you through some of these pictures, Joe, just kind of replicated nicely. So skip over them, but the front three windows, it's hard to get them all at once, but there are three. One below each of the upper windows. And we would propose to dig shallow wells. We think it's sort of in the six to twelve inch neighborhood, the depth. It's a little bit hard to determine how deep they are because on the inside, there have been cabinetry built in front of the windows. So we had to kind of fish fish our way through there to see how high they are, but they are high, you know, high and fairly short windows. They're not in any way deep, you know, they were never deeper double hung windows or something like that. So that's the work at the front, and we'll kind of show you the windows we're proposing. But we've already talked to Joe about hoppers and fixed windows versus the ones we are proposing today. Few more views. So kind of similar picture to Joe's. This is beyond the fence from the parking lot itself. Just to give you an actual view of what we're seeing and how far away it is. And then, you know, if you get into the parking lot, you'll see more detail about what we're proposing. So this is a two level unit. And so this is the upper level bedrooms, and this is the lower level living space and kitchen behind that fence. There are windows in that alley also, just two of them that you won't be able to see. So they're not really under review, but they are being replaced also. So floor plans. So again, on the front, we've got the three brick openings that we're proposing to replace or replace the brick with windows and then the window wells, which we had been proposing shallow metal rings, given the the depth, almost like a garden edging, because we think it's really sort of curb height and not something deep like a rescue window or an egress window would have. So we thought perhaps a thinner edging would be more invisible, but we're open to that discussion. And then in the back, it's essentially every window on the back on both levels. So both the back facing and in the alley, we've got windows. We're going to be doing hopefully lighting, and we have sconces proposed here that are dark sky friendly along the facade, just to light the area softly. And then the other part of the proposal is to replace the stockade fence with brick walls. And those brick walls would also have a gate and some lighting to get from the parking spaces, which are deeded with the property to this entrance. Taking you upstairs, really just to show you the other windows. These are the ones that are possibly visible from from afar here. Okay, so we'll go to the front, some of the details we were proposing at the front. So this is an example from not not in a budding neighbor, but somewhere in the in the Patothe neighborhood of something that we saw. That's kind of similar to the edging we were proposing. And also, these windows were something we were proposing. We had trouble finding with Marvin or Pella that they have hoppers anymore. So we're we're reaching out to the reps to figure out why, because the hopper was our preferred window, which would tilt inward and you know, an awning which swings out isn't really possible because of the the these the window wells themselves not being, we're hoping they wouldn't be very deep out into the front garden. So that so the window would hit the rings if it were to swing outward. So failing to find a hopper, we were proposing this sliding window similar to the precedent image there. And it would be an aluminum clad wood window for Marvin in that case. The coloration will show you some of the other surrounding windows on the building and in the neighborhood would be intending to match the predominant color of windows and trim in this area on the outside. And so this is a projection of what kind of depth we would have and how that window would sit relative to the front grade. So that is what we're proposing there. Joe's staff report suggested window wells that are parallel to the facade instead of these kind of circular ones and that we try to continue finding a window that's a single piece rather than subdivided into two. So since then, we have found one manufacturer parrot windows that offers an aluminum clad hopper. So we're happy to switch to that spec. But we still are working on Marvin and Pella to see what they do have. Out back, we're proposing a Marvin double hung window, same color. And in this case, on the upper windows, it would be a one for one replacement, same size, same panes and everything like that. At the kitchen level, the garden level, because it's we're moving the kitchen to the rear wall, we're proposing to raise the sill of that window up above counter height. But keeping the brick arches, keeping the blue stone sill, keeping the brick intact and framing in the new window sill with essentially paneling to match the trim. So the masonry would be preserved and it would just be taken care of at the level of trim. So we've got some drawings of the proposed wall. So that wall facing the parking is this first facade. And it would be brick piers with blue stone caps. And then a gate in the center painted matte black made of wood. And we've got sconces proposed on either side flanking that gate that allow lit walkway. The hardware on the door on the gate and the light itself are shown here. I think black works well back here with all the ironwork of fences and fire escapes and different elements in this neighborhood. We thought would work well as a as the color and finish. And then the side views. On one side, there's sort of a finished garden space with brick walkways. And so we're proposing to kind of leave a section of fence between ourselves and the neighbors. I'll flip back to the plan to show that. So on one side, the the wall would start out near the parking. And on the other side, it would be the entire section. Because that is just essentially bordering on some asphalt and it's really trash storage for condo association that encompasses several of the buildings here. The other lighting spec is this one. So we have one for the courtyard, the garden, and one shown for the exterior on the on the on the fence. So the rounder one is the one we can see out by parking. And the more lantern like one would be inside. Probably, as Joe mentioned, not visible because it's down at the garden level. So that that's the kind of our presentation, the section of brick wall that we're referencing not doing kind of here where we have an abutting neighbors finished garden that we can't really dig foundations and piece that back together. So we kind of had to start the wall out here. From the public's perspective, you know, everything visible will be brick. This will be something you know only from the insides. I think that's it for the for the walkthrough drawings. I can go back to any part or answer questions. Just let me know.
Okay, well, Jim, Nancy, do you have questions?
This is my first meeting, so I'm a little bit new to the procedure here. Is this a good time to make comment for more questions?
This is.
Okay, so my only it's nice work, by the way, Derek. I appreciate everything you did there. The question I have is the windows that you chose in the front, and I got why you got to that point. However, I think the casement windows just are not really historically accurate. It's not the right word. I don't think they're necessarily fitting of this neighborhood. I don't know if there's another choice, but I think that kind of aesthetic doesn't necessarily go in my opinion with this neighborhood. I wonder if there's a better
This one here?
Yeah, they're too shallow to do double hungs. I understand that, but you're going to potentially set a precedent for other people on the street. So and I get it, there's only one house, but I'm wondering if there's a better approach. It just kind of reminds me of like apartment houses in the eighties or something.
Yeah, no, we're with you. When we talked to Joe informally, we said that we set out to do, we want we want the ability to open it. So we did set out to find a hopper, which is a window we've all seen in basements. But we went into the marketplace, including Pella, Marvin, Anderson, Harvey, Home Depot, anywhere you looked. The only one you could get is an all white, all vinyl unit, which is pretty terrible. So we sort of gave up and said, well, we'd rather have something that matched the windows in color and finish than something bright, white and plastic looking. But since then, we did find a company called Parrot Windows in Wisconsin that still does hoppers. And we've heard that Marvin and Pella do, but their websites don't have them. So we are planning to switch. And that would look just like a single, a single rent. Wouldn't have the subdivision.
That'd be better. Because I was going to even say, I understood you can't really have it tilted out because of the
sort of hit the masonry exactly.
Nobody's probably going to open those ever. It's not a life safety issue. It's not a
It's definitely not for egress. No, I think inside we're creating a seating area. So there's actually a bench you could probably reach them from. And because the only other operable windows are at the far extreme of the apartment, it might actually get, they may actually get used for cross ventilation sometimes.
That'd be a better look than glaze. Glazing. Good. Okay, that was my takeaway.
I actually, Jim, you know, this is Nancy, my first meeting as well, but living in the neighborhood for as long as I have. I found them to be totally out of the neighborhood character. I it's it just seems that they're I don't want to use the word too contemporary, but they just they don't have the right look in my mind. And you're right that, you know, they would set a precedent then for other people potentially to use as a benchmark.
Right.
So I would say we must be able to do better with those windows that gives a historical, you know, character. Yeah, agree a hundred percent. That was the one thing that jumped out at me for sure.
And the only other question or comment I noticed in the staff recommendations that they wanted you to use masonry rather than the metal corrugated metal there on the wells, which I understand. Can you do that in brick and it may eventually fall apart? In a sense, is there a way to do that? Or would you potentially even do those large stones that on the face of the lower level of the building too? Or probably brick? What are you thinking?
Yeah, the depth made us wonder whether, you know, one or two bricks high would would be a good detail versus something simple like this. You know, this is more like something you you separate maybe like a gravel path from your planted area in a garden. It seemed more invisible. This is why we were thinking of this. You could certainly do it out of brick. You know, it'd be it might only be, you know, sort of a couple of bricks tall, but it could be done that way.
You know, I didn't have as much problem with the metal, but I don't really think you're going to end up putting plants in there or trees. You probably won't really see a lot of it, but
Yeah, and ours would be, you know, we painted black. It wouldn't have that kind of rusty or like galvanized look either on the inside of the of the ring. So ideally, yeah, it would be fairly invisible.
I don't have a problem with that with the metal, but if the rest of the group does, I'm okay with that.
I'm with the metal. And actually, I sort of make it unanimous in terms of the window was the only concern I had. So I think I think I'm on the same page as the rest of you.
Yeah, by the way, like your brick wall in the back, that's going to look real. That's going to be very nice.
Definitely. Thank you. Yeah, that's going to be a nice touch.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that does anyone have anything else they want to add before we ask for public comment?
You know, the only other thing, just from my personal experience, I live in the South End, is that we're here in Saint Patothe is that your light fixtures where they're really attractive along the back of the fence, you may want brighter lights in the back than they would appear to give off. It's just a personal thought. Because it's fairly dark back there.
Yeah, yeah. It's it's, I mean, our thought was kind of in the dark sky family of lights, just to not, there's a lot of windows facing each other back there. So we're trying to kind of be cognizant of that, like not having light pollution and just being able to kind of see our way from parking to courtyard. I believe there's other lights that illuminate for security and that aren't part of this project. I mean, I think there's there's some existing already that do that. Is there even a lamp post back there? I feel like it's it is illuminated. Back there, yeah.
All right, that's it.
So Joe, are there any members of the public here? To comment?
Yes, there are. I'll just bring up the script. Yeah, let me do that. All right, can you see that, Susan?
Yep. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform.
So any member of the public, if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And I'm just checking my email to see we received any. Nope. Okay, I don't think there's any public comment, Susan.
Okay, then I guess we could proceed to a motion if someone wants to make one.
Motion to conclude the meeting?
No, motion to approve this project.
Oh, to approve?
With provisos.
I thought we were kind of on the same page. Do we have a motion to approve? Susan, you guide us. What are you supposed to say?
Okay, yeah, you you want to move to approve the project as proposed with the provisions that we just talked about regarding the windows. Right, Joe's? That's the only thing.
Yeah, I would propose approved as admitted with the proviso that the window details of the three front windows are amended to staff.
Yeah, that's the that's the proposal. And then Jim, you second it?
Second.
Okay, and then we
approve.
Okay, three zero.
All right, great. Thank you. Thanks, Derek, for working with me and we'll be in touch about the windows.
Great, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Joe and Susan, what frequency or doesn't they meet based on the the subjects that come before you guys?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
What's the frequency or is it just based on as needed for these meetings?
As needed, as we get the applications.
As you get the applications.
Our last one was December, but that
Oh, wow, okay.
That was unusually long. I mean, usually we don't skip more than a month or two. And and her problem has been having a quorum because we've got to have three people in order to even meet. And well, right now, we've got four, but you're only having me for two more months. So then you'll be back down to three and you'll have the same problem of every single person has to be able to make a hearing in order to even hold the hearing.
All right, well, hopefully Jim and I can fill in there.
Yeah, are we looking for some more members, Joe, at this point?
Yeah, we do have one pending who's been, we've recommended, it was from the neighborhood and we've recommended that he be appointed to the mayor's office. So we're just waiting for the mayor's office to move that forward to city council. It's just unfortunately, as Nancy and Jim know, it's a long process.
And and the maximum number we can have from the neighborhood is four. So we've including this person that Joe just referred to, we've maxed out our four. The other three that we're supposed to have are supposed to be appointed by landmarks. But
By landmarks.
And you're right, Susan, you're leaving. You're moving.
Yeah, I'm moving in the end of August, so I'm no longer eligible. So right now, we have four from all from the neighborhood. And September, we'll have only three from the neighborhood. And that means every single person counts because we need three for a meeting.
And Joe, will you be handily permanently or?
Until, no, once we we hope to hire a new preservation planner this summer. So, you know, probably by September, they'll certainly be a new planner, but I'll be holding their hand through the the first few hearings.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are these generally, you know, people have been living in the property? Or new purchasers that want to amend what they've purchased? Or does it vary?
It varies. It varies. You know, any work, exterior work that's visible from a public way is supposed to submit an application to the commission and then staff determines which ones require a public hearing like Follin Street. Or we do have one, what we call administrative review, which is, it was just security upgrades to a property at one thirty eight Saint Patothe Street. So that's actually our next agenda items.
And that's what we've always done is we've been engaged in all the the real design review projects, but for the administrative review, Gabby, who had been our planner and now Joe, who's an interim planner, do that. And we basically rubber stamp.
Got it. Okay.
So let's rubber stamp.
This is application twenty five point zero nine seven seven S B one thirty eight Saint Patothe Street. And as you can see, it's a security upgrade. So installation of security cameras, lighting and intercoms, installation of shatterproof glass and film at existing windows and front yard replacement of existing fence, at rear yard replacement of existing gate, and at rear elevation replacement of two existing doors with steel security doors.
And you think it's all just fine?
Yes, yep, it's compliant with the design guidelines for the district.
Okay, then we just need a motion to approve it as submitted.
Motion to approve as submitted?
Second. Okay, how many in favor? Three zero.
Well, staff updates, I pretty much already filled you in that we're looking for a new preservation planner. So, you know, as soon as that happens, I'll let you know. And then, you know, I'll let you know as soon as possible if we're have a July hearing. And again, it just depends on whether or not we get any design review applications. But just so you know, it's been quiet in all of our districts, I think. You know, with the uncertainty of building materials and the economy, people are a little cautious to be doing large projects.
Well, I found that same thing in trying to sell my condo. I mean, the buyers evaporated. They were all just too nervous. I did find someone finally, but it took longer than it should have.
Yeah, it's interesting. It's definitely quite do, and it's a little slow, definitely slow to get buyers.
Yeah, they kept the rates at the same today, which was not surprising to me, but Joe, I may be in touch with you at the schoolhouse. We're thinking about potentially putting in some cameras for security in our parking lot. We've got a parking lot for seventeen. And I'm just curious what people are doing these days and what, if any, are the privacy considerations and does that ever come up?
Yep, happy to talk with you.
Yeah, because it's something that I've been thinking about. I've been a longtime treasurer of our condo association. And it's something I've been thinking about just from a security thing, but quite frankly, I hate to go there, but you know, having that kind of system can also be a deterrent.
I don't know. I have them. It doesn't keep the people out of mind, but unfortunately.
Yep, yep. That's the whole thing.
So good. It does help to have a record of stuff at a minimum.
Yeah, Jim, do you have one at your place?
I do, but you know, we're in a small two unit building, so we just did our own and but it monitors because we get a lot of transients coming through here constantly. Because I just love to shoot from here. You know, I'm curious, along with what you're saying, I know this isn't really under Joe's purview, but is there any movement on the construction of where the motel is on?
The Midtown, the old Midtown Hotel?
Last time I heard, they hadn't had financing. It was being held up.
That is exactly what I heard too, because you know, that backs up to us for alley four oh four.
Right.
They've extended the the lease to Northeastern to rent it to them. So there's nothing happening anytime soon.
Oh, really? They did extend the lease there.
That's great. That's great.
Well, that answers that question. They're not imminent anyway. I don't know, you know, is the city maybe right now not a good time for anybody to think about new developments except for those fancy high rises and even those, God knows what's going on down in the financial area.
It's a whole nother conversation.
Exactly. It's not the neighborhood, that's for sure. I much prefer this.
I think our last, yeah, our last bit of business is to adjourn if someone wants to make a motion.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn. That would be my first time.
Seconded.
Great. Thanks, everyone.
Take care.
Take care.
Bye.
Happy summer.